This meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order for March 24th, and I see now that the recording has started, so I am comforted that we are in fact in a public session and those members of the public who have been able to join us, welcome. And for those who are still trying, the recording will be available and available to the press and therefore I think we meet our obligations. This is a meeting of the Committee of the Whole dedicated to budget discussions for both the operating and capital budgets for 2021. It may be that pursuant to our internal processes, this is a meeting that ought to be chaired by the Deputy Mayor. I am quite happy to carry on, Councillor Keller-Gerempe, if you wish. This is not something that I had thought about until I opened up my agenda this morning and realized, oh, committee is really somebody else's job, but I'm prepared and quite happy to do it if if that meets with your consent and that of council.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mayor Ireland. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, I've called us to order. Mr. Given is going to present initially, and then I will invite him to to call upon any other members of administration to present as appropriate. Before we get to the motions, and there will presumably be a number of motions, I've written out a bit of a template to help guide us through today. So before we get into specific motions, I will just take a couple of minutes to discuss my thoughts on how the the motion should be formulated to get us through to the end of the day. With that said, Mr. Given, I turn it to you.
Thanks, Your Worship, Council. Pleasure to be here today with you for the budget presentation. First, I just want to speak to the overall context as Mayor Ireland related, you are acting as Committee of the Whole. Ultimately, of course, final budget approval rests with council in its you know, position as regular council, but today you are committee directing administration on the way that you want to see the budget developed and ultimately presented to council. So my hope would be that as we go through the course of the day, and as Mayor Ireland mentioned, as there are motions providing direction to administration, that we would arrive at a position at the end of the day where there is a budget that you can feel confident in, you know, overall reflects council's priorities and that you feel confident that you've had influence in crafting. And then you would have a time to pause and reflect before that budget that you have crafted comes in front of you in your sitting as regular council at the in the April, I believe, April 6th, regular council meeting. So just just in that context, to remember, to remind yourselves that while no decisions are final here, we should be crafting the budget. And you are crafting the budget in a way that should allow you by the end of the day to say, well, although maybe I didn't get every single thing that I was hoping to do in the budget, the overall budget is something that I can support because it has enough of my individual priorities in there and addresses enough of the overall community priorities that it should be recommended forward to council. Just in terms of the setup for today, the major decisions, I will really point out to council that the major decisions are really at the end of the budget presentation. We will go through departmental budgets and look at the major drivers. We will look at the highlights of the capital budget and some of the major items there, as well as the referred item that was just added from committee yesterday will come up. We will look at community group funding increase requests and council will have a chance to choose whether or not to support those funding increase requests. And then finally, we will deal with a section, and this is the area where I would suggest the most impactful decisions are related to COVID response. And well, there's a bit of a distinction. Council is fully aware of the most money that the provincial and federal governments put out to respond to COVID-19. Council's major decisions related to the flexibility that that most money has provided us, those major decisions are at the end of the budget presentation. So if I was to characterize it, you know, the the big rocks are at the end, and those are the items that will have the most overall impact on what taxpayers see in 2021. And they also provide council the most direct way to address the financial challenges that residents and businesses and property owners are facing in Jasper as a result of COVID. And so I would just provide that reminder that those major decisions really are the ones that you will see towards the end. So with that context, I hope that you'll see that we've developed a budget that responds focusing on council's priority areas. Specifically, administration has placed priority on asset management of our existing facilities and ensuring that we maintain them in good condition for community use and that we don't get further behind in terms of a mounting infrastructure deficit. We have focused on community safety. We have focused on housing and making incorporating the significant steps council has taken towards advancing our ability to address affordable housing in the community through the Canop project. And again, as I said, focusing on COVID response. So with that sort of preamble and overall context, I'll go now into the budget presentation. We will go along and I will note where administration would suggest that a motion is needed, the kinds that Mayor Ireland discussed. There was not a a motion list sent ahead of time. I think that would be a bit presumptive of administration to say, here's all the specific things. We have identified some specific recommendations in some places, but we would acknowledge that council has decision making here, and there may be other things that you wish to address. And so that's why there wasn't a list of motions or specific recommendations on each item. So with that, and maybe I'll just pause to take a breath and ask if there are any questions at this stage. Seeing none.
If I might just interject, Mr. Given, just so it is clear, both the council and to members of the public watching the the intent which I have discussed with with Mr. Given for process today is that we will try and proceed in a sequential order. So as the budget presentation unfolds, we will come to a state, for example, with the operational budget. And the suggestion is that when we conclude or are about to conclude that discussion, we would anticipate a motion in in this nature, and that is that Committee of the Whole direct administration to incorporate, for example, the operational department budget as presented or as amended in the amount of whatever amount we land on into the final 2021 operating budget to be presented to council for final consideration on April 6th, I think is the date. So we would, we would build a number of motions along the way so that at the end there would be a motion that Committee of the Whole recommend a overall operating and capital budget for approval by council on April 6th. So if if that is understood, that that is the way we've sort of pictured the day going. So be prepared for a number of sequential motions leading ultimately to a recommendation of council sitting as Committee of the Whole for budget approval by council at a later date. And again, I would invite any questions about that process. And if there are none, then I'll turn it back to Mr. Given to proceed with the actual budget presentation. Councillor Butler.
Your Worship, Council Butler's gone off my screen and I don't hear him. I'm not sure if he's turned off video when he was intending to turn on mic.
That's exactly, I did. I turned off the video intending to turn on the audio. Sorry. My, I agree with the process. My concern is that there may be areas where some councillors feel that we don't have adequate information publicly in front of us to make a decision on a particular area. I myself will run into that problem in some areas of the capital budget. So my ability to agree to a vote at committee to advance a section of the budget might be hampered depending on how much information, additional information beyond what is in the current presentation that is attached to the agenda is there. So I mention that so as not to seem like I'm throwing a monkey wrench in the works if that comes up. Thank you.
But I appreciate that that observation and that forewarning. So so thank you. That seems entirely appropriate, and we'll have those discussions if and as they arise. If there is nothing else, then again, Mr. Given, please proceed with the with the overall presentation and the details as you see fit.
Sure. Thank you, Worship. And so council, I will flag those times where we would be expecting one of those sequential motions. So we'll pause. I'll flag that, you know, this would be a time for a motion. And we will have a discussion debate there and leave it to council what motions you wish to make. So I will start the presentation. And if I could just see a head nod that all of you can in fact see the presentation on screen. Excellent. Well, thank you, council. I appreciate that the administrative team and yourselves have put a significant amount of of work already into the 2021 budget. I would note that our budget discussion today really is focused on the municipal tax supported budget and not the not the utilities budget because council has previously made decisions related to the utility side. And so that is not the focus of our discussion. We are getting somewhat late in the year in terms of other steps that need to happen, as council is well aware. There is a process related to taxation assessment where tax notices need to be sent out to property owners, where they need to have an amount of time to be able to file objections and all those legislated dates really provide, I guess, the the timelines that we need to respond to where we are now in terms of the overall budget and our ability to get it passed in time to meet those deadlines. So a little bit of historical context, I think it is important to recognize that between 2013 and 2019, the overall level of municipal tax requisition per 100,000 assessed property had been decreasing regularly. This might be in contrast to what the general public perception is, and I will speak briefly about the impact of increasing values of properties and how that relates to overall tax payments. But it is important and to be very clear that the overall tax burden per 100,000 assessed property for both residential and non-residential properties has been decreasing. Last year, of course, council took very specific action to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic and acted very, very quickly to reduce the municipal budget by a significant amount. That was that reduction, if not addressed, would be ongoing and would lead to a significant erosion in the level of municipal services you're, we are able to provide the community. And if I can, you know, make a little bit light of that, a significant erosion in our physical assets if they are not addressed. And so the budget does attempt to correct for this anomaly by using the 2019 year as our base year for comparison, which again was a year where the overall tax burden had been trending down per $100,000. So this specifically shows the tax burden per $100,000 of assessed value for residential properties. And you can see here in this graph how in 2011, a minister, a, there was $237 per $100,000 of assessed value for an urban residential property. That did go up to 2013, but since this council has been elected, it has been on a downward trend. And in fact, it's been on a downward trend since that high point in 2013. To the point where in 2019, the per $100,000 of assessed value burden of $233 is less than it was in 2011. And you can see that significant drop off in 2020 as a result of council's emergency response to the COVID-19 pandemic. That same trend does hold true for non-residential properties as well, where you can see that 2013 really was the high point, and there has been a ongoing downward trend all the way to 2019, where again, you can see that in 2019, per $100,000 of assessed value, a commercial property is paying less than it was in 2011. So that downward trend has been significant and has been continued really since 2013. It is fair to say, well, that's not the same as my actual municipal tax bill. And we should note that your municipal tax bill that, sorry, the tax bill that residents receive does also incorporate other items like the requisition to the Evergreens Foundation and the Alberta Education Requisition, which I like to call the provincial property tax. Nobody else necessarily does, but that's what it is. Is the province assesses a tax on properties to fund a portion of the cost of the education system. Now, the municipality is not in control of those other factors. But in my experience, when a resident gets the bill, they do look at the bottom line and they don't necessarily look at how the totals break out across those different areas. So I think it's important to note that when we speak about taxes, we're speaking about the municipal portion of the property tax bill, which we is the only portion that we are fully in control of. And so that discussion about saying, well, okay, my house has gone up in value or my property has gone up in value. And so you are, the municipality is actually just making more money there. And you know, that this view of the property taxes per 100,000 of assessed value is a bit of a misleading direction. And the fact is that if we pick an example property, one that in 2011 would have been valued at $702,000, they would have had a real municipal tax bill of $1,661 at the time. And again, this is the municipal only portion of the property tax bill, not the provincial portion or the Evergreens requisition. That, as you can see, was a little bit more choppy over time because the assessed value of any individual property responds to changes in the market. And so while you can see, see that this had some ups and downs, overall, the value of the property, you know, increased from 702,000 in 2011, went down slightly in the 2013 period and then up again and then down based on sales and comparable market data. But ultimately in 2019, the property was worth $30,000 more, yet paid you know, less tax than it did in 2013. So if you look at the 2013 number where the property was valued at $688,000, it paid $1,758 in municipal property tax. Fast forward to 2019, that same property was valued at $734,000 and paid $710 in municipal property tax. So this does show that while absolutely there are ups and downs of assessment and a straight increase in assessment does not lead to a straight increase in the municipal property tax bill. And that is because the municipality has done the hard work of ensuring that the mill rate stays relatively low and has been decreasing. That's that per $100,000 number that we talk about often. And it's also important to note that as you look across the community, there are a number of properties where where a old, less valuable property has been replaced by a newer, more expensive property, more valuable property. And these are actual net additions to our overall assessment base. So these are, you know, a property that was a $400,000 property that is torn down and replaced with a $1.2 million property. That is an action that is a change in the act, a net addition in the actual assets in the community. And so therefore, that asset pays a higher property tax bill. That was not because the municipality has changed the value of that property by, you know, some market measure. It's because there has been a real new growth in the value of that property. And the property tax system is such that when there is new growth like that, that property pays more in property taxes. So council in April will see a presentation from our assessor. So a bit of a preview of that is really related to this. Since between 2011 and 2019, the total taxable assessment in the municipality has increased by over $400 million. So the total value of all the properties that the the Muni can tax went from approximately $1.4 billion to $1.8 billion. And both of those are rough, rough measures. You'll see the presentation as we come up in April. But suffice it to say that the overall amount of properties that can share the burden of funding municipal services has increased. Some of that $400 million increase has been market value, which is, you know, I would suggest is not the same as the real growth, but a significant amount, as I look across the community, has been real growth where older properties have been replaced by newer ones. So with that, we are going to move into departmental budgets. We will go through them in a sequential order and council. This is where we would invite you to ask questions, to have discussion. And we would hope that we would arrive at a position where on each departmental budget, you could make a recommendation or a direction to administration to incorporate the departmental budget as presented in the in the 2021 operating budget, sort of as outlined by Mayor Ireland. Before we go into departmental budgets, I'll just at pause and ask if there are any questions or comments related to the information that I just provided related to that historical context.
I saw your lips moving, Mayor Ireland, with my name, but I didn't hear you. Not a question, just to comment, Mr. Given, it is, you know, I am so grateful to have you here and to have you guiding us through this budget season. And I am very, very grateful for your clear and concise explanations. And as someone that served three and a half years, I really benefited from that tenement spiel. So thank you.
Councillor Keller-Gerempe, had I seen your hand earlier? No. All right. It does not appear that there are other questions. So, Mr. Given, carry on.
Okay. Thank you, Worship. I'll go back to sharing my presentation. Okay. So council, the first departmental budget that we are going to deal with again, will be the operational budget. But again, just as a reminder, arising from that anomaly and again, seeing it on that was chart, so you can really see the significant anomaly that the 2021 action was, and appreciate the justification of that and needing to respond in an emergency situation. I think council made the right decisions there. But for comparison sake, we are looking at 2019 years and comparing change between 2019 and 2021, recognizing that that 2019 year was a more reflective of the regular costs of operating the municipality. So the first area is the operations budget. You can see that the net change from 2019, you know, between the 2019 and 2021 years is just under $400,000 in the operations area. On this slide, you can see some of the description of the significant drivers of that change. Those are outlined in the notes section. And the really major areas of those are in the roads, streets, sidewalks and lights and the Public Works Building. In the roads and streets, you can see that we have approximately $130,000 of that change is really in contracted services to keep up with demands. I'd suggest that this is a bit of a reflection of resourcing needs. There are ongoing projects that the municipality needs to support, and there may not be enough capacity within municipal staff to be able to do that. And so as a result, the municipality is having to bring in additional contracted resources. We're not proposing to solve the ongoing municipal staffing in this budget. But suffice to say that the costs associated with bringing in outside services may require council in a future budget discussion to assess whether it might be cost benefit of having additional in-house resources that could provide other functions. But you can see that that of that $195,000 of net increase, 130,000 of it is as a result of contracted services across a number of different projects. On line four, you'll see that there are increases in salaries and benefits and increased materials, goods and supplies. And across a number of different areas, you can see that utility costs are increasing. There is 20,000 reflected in note number three on roads, streets, walks and lights, and there is an additional 10,000 reflected in the Public Works Building line, which is note number four. Overall, the utility costs for the municipality are in the order of magnitude of about a million dollars a year. And so it's important to remember that when we talk about utilities, I know none of us have experienced in our own homes, utilities going down. And that same pressure applies to the municipal budget. So I'll leave it there and open for questions. This would be a point where we would hope that after council is satisfied, that we would have a motion to direct administration to incorporate the operations budget as presented in the 2021 operating budget. Your Worship, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Questions from councillors? You will have to do more than wave your hand because I am only seeing the screen that Mr. Given has shared. There we go. Now I can take questions. So with respect to the operations budget, questions from council? Councillor Butler?
Thanks very much. It is awkward, I suppose, for those observing the meeting to discuss questions without the, you know, without the numbers in front of us. So I don't know what we want to do about that. I have a couple of questions. Mr. Given, thanks very much for the information. I, the first thing I want to query is what we have to acknowledge is a huge increase year over year, even I do understand when I say year over year, it's two years, but housing operations, could you shed a little light on that very substantial increase? And if that is seen as an ongoing increase, I'm very concerned. I I certainly understand that rent potential for the Cabin Creek House this year is a factor, but it's a one-time factor. So how much of what we're seeing there, an additional $35,000 over the two years is going to reserves and how much it is of it is ongoing expenses? And then I'll group my questions. My second question is on municipally owned housing, are we collecting adequate end market rent on that space? I am concerned to see such a hefty tax-supported increase and indeed such a heavy tax support year over year. And I think taxpayers want to be sure that we're maximizing incomes where possible, and the taxpayers are getting fair value for their money in respect that we are collecting market-based rents where it's appropriate.
Yes, Your Worship, but Council Butler's questions, Council Butler, I'll take them in reverse order. With respect to the housing and ensuring that we're getting a fair return, that's something that is noted by administration that needs to be reviewed. We would hope to bring something forward to council. Currently, the housing that the municipality provides, I think, could be optimized. There is a property that we might find a a more optimal way to provide housing or interim accommodation for for staff who are transitioning into the community. Administration is aware of that. We would expect that we bring that forward in advance of the 2022 budget review of a market analysis. It should be noted and and if I, yeah, it's it's a bit awkward because ultimately, you know, a part of my contract is the ability to rent staff housing. And so, you know, I'll I'll be a bit cautious with my comments on this. But it, you know, it should be noted that a challenge for the municipality is recruiting staff and having somewhere for them to live. Not all staff have the ability to negotiate their contracts the same way that I do, did. I would say that the ability to rent staff accommodation at a reasonable price was a part of the reason why we were able to negotiate the ultimate salary that we did for me. There are other positions in the organization that don't have that same ability. And council will face some decision making around whether we should be getting market rates. from those spots or whether council wishes to provide that sort of benefit in able, in order to support the development of the organization through staffing. It is a complex question and I think it is one that is worthy of analysis and that analysis needs to happen before the 2022 budget. It is something that is identified by administration. The second question was in terms of the revenue, we also, you know, of course, the the revenue from the Cabin Creek House, early projections and hopefully not continuing are that it may not be available until September. So that is a challenge that we'll have to address, but it is not just a couple of months of lost revenue there. Even at the relatively modest rate of revenue that we expected, it is, we had to incorporate that uncertainty for up to half a year or potentially more in the budget. And there have been about $45,000 in full transfer to reserves in terms of the increase over 2019. So yes, there are increased transfers to reserves over 2019. That is a result of the aging infrastructure that we are seeing and there needs to be more money going into capital to maintain those aging assets. Ms. Mallon Chuck, do you want to speak to the specifics of how much increase in transfer to reserves there is in the housing operations? I just want to make sure that we're giving council the exact correct number.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Given through to council. So to elaborate a bit more on what Mr. Given has already said, in 2021, a planned transfer of $45,460 to reserves within the housing, that would be an increase from 2019 of $14,500. And it is what we've been planning as some increases in this area over a few years coming up because of the aging infrastructure. So we will see some more increases in future years as well. Thank you.
Your worship, if I may have just, you know, put that into context, council is well aware of the public decision that you made to support $200,000 of improvements to the Cabin Creek House. That's an example of a project that needs to be funded through these reserves. That is an example of an asset that, to my understanding, probably hadn't had any significant work done since it was built. There had been minor touch-up work over time, absolutely, but no significant work. And so that is an example of how aging infrastructure ends up demanding additional funding from reserves to renew that asset.
Counselor McGrath, and just before I call on you, I, just for the benefit those members of the public who have access to the agenda. And perhaps Mr. Given you or Ms. Mallon Chuck can confirm, but what is presented early on in today's presentation, and I know I've lost the page number, but what is presented is the net tax-supported portion of the operations budget. But the actual budget, as I see it, is presented on page 59 of 78 of our budget. So, for example, with respect to Counselor Butler's questions about housing, there is a very modest increase in revenue offset by a larger expense. But what we see in the early documents is simply the net effect on the tax burden. And so as I understand it, what we're looking at is a request from administration to approve an operating budget for operations of about 3.7 million, of which 2.7 million is attributed to the tax requisition. And so for those, those other members of the public trying to follow, I think it's important to look at other pages in the document, not the first page we landed on. And sorry for that long interjection, Counsel McGrath, go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland. And thank you, Counselor Butler, for that question on this line item of housing for operations. My question may not be able to be answered today, but it's been something that I've been curious about, never really able to get an answer on in relation to the $45,000 going into reserves, for the example of the Cabin Creek House. I am not sure how many houses we own in the community and that's never really been detailed on this term yet. So that's something that I'm looking for maybe in the future, maybe not today.
So, subject or correction by my team, I'm going from memory. The municipality, I believe, owns the Cabin Creek House, owns one duplex, which we have both sides, and further rents space for staff accommodation that we do not own. Ms. Mallon Chuck, is that correct?
Yes, and within the context of that area, we also include the Cottage Medical Clinic as part of one of the buildings that is being rented out and, and we incur expenses as well. So that's part and parcel of that sub-department of budget in operations. Yes.
Thanks, Ms. Mallon Chuck. Absolutely. We hadn't included the Kevin, sorry, the cottage clinic in there.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Counselor DeMora?
Sorry, trying to flip back from the screen to to the presentation. Do we have, is there a number included in that on what the overall expenses and the overall revenues are when it comes to our current housing? I'm not asking for the number right now, but is that calculated somewhere or is it calculable?
Your worship to Counselor DeMora's we'll, we'll call that, we'll call that a word. Yes, and again, just to refer council, you know, the detailed budget document is a part of the agenda package. It is further on. And so you're seeing first the administration presentation and focus. You would see that on, I believe, page 20. Sorry, I'm going to say that it is 23, 22 of the detailed budget document. In terms of housing operations, the overall revenue is 124,942 and the overall expense is 181,750. This is a spot where multiple screens comes in really, really handy. So your worship, with that presentation, if there aren't additional questions, we would be seeking, and this is just the first example of where we'd be seeking a motion to approve as recommended or with changes that council would identify.
Counselor Keller, had I seen your hand earlier?
I have one question. Yesterday, we agreed for the additional light for the pedestrian crossing. Is this part of this budget?
No, your worship, but the Counselor Keller, no, that is not incorporated here. We are on the operating side. You will see a slide. We have updated our presentation from what's in your package to incorporate a slide reflective of council's direction yesterday. That item, just as a preview, can be incorporated. Administration would suggest it be funded from reserves. And so it would not have a net impact on the property tax, a property tax implication for this year because it could be funded from reserves, but you'll see that as a decision point for council in the capital section.
Thank you. One more question. On the property that we rent, the renters in there, so that should become kind of a mill. So the amount of rent we collect should offset the cost of that house. Would I be correct for renters? Property we rent?
Counselor, I'm not certain that that's the case. I think that's the, an example of the type of decision council will have to do when we analyze this issue is to what extent is, does the municipality need to support, you know, a supplement to reduce the cost of housing if we wish to recruit staff? And I make no determination on that, but that's exactly the kind of question that we need to do when we analyze that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Given.
Counselor Butler?
Thanks very much. I'd like to query the very substantial year-over-year increase in grounds from a little over 100,000 to 155,000. So what accounts for that increase, please?
Counselor Butler, you are referencing the the expense line in grounds on page 22?
Sorry, well, I'm looking at, sorry, the number I quoted there was a revenue increase of $49,000 and I, I don't understand how we receive revenue in grounds. And so there's a commensurate larger increase in expenses. And I just would like to understand both.
Yeah, again, and before Mr. Greathead comes on to speak to that, you know, that's, that's a part of the reason why we wanted to direct council's attention to the net impact. You can see the net change from 2019 is actually just under $10,000. So that, you know, certainly the change in one area, looking at the ops revenue might be slightly misleading if it isn't also taken in combination with the ops expense. But Mr. Greathead, do you want to speak to the change in that?
Thank you. One of the considerations that's going to be driving up the cost of the grounds is we had a turf management position to take care of the soccer fields and all of our green spaces. In 2020, with the budget reduction, that position was unfilled. So this is getting us back up to speed in, within that department so that we have the appropriate care of the grounds. Last year, we pretty much just hit them with fertilizer and almost let them go fallow because there was very little activity. So that was, you know, in some ways it was good for us. We can, you know, let it sit, let the root growth develop and all that. But it's, it's bringing us back up to speed.
Additionally, your worship to Counselor Butler's question, on the revenue side, we do have a negotiated increase in terms of revenue with parks. We have a contract with them and we have negotiated an increase in the revenue that we would receive from parks for that contract.
Thank you.
Just for ease of reference, I detected that, at least from my perspective, we're talking about different page numbers. So, Mr. Given, you, I think, when you referred to page 22, are referring to the 2021 to 2025 operating and capital budgets, which start at page 38 of my combined agenda. So when you say page 22, I have to look for page 60. So just for the benefit of others, if you're working from an independent document, the pages are differently numbered than if you're looking at the collective document. But I think that that's what you have to do is add 38 to whatever Mr. Given says. And that's, that's not quite 42, which is the answer apparently to, to everything, but 38 is close. While I, while I have the mic, as I apparently always do, I have another general question for administration. And again, what is presented primarily, and we can begin with the operations budget, is the tax-supported amount, which is roughly 2.7 million dollars, but an overall budget of approximately 3.7 million dollars. So when we get to the point of a motion to direct administration to incorporate an amount into the budget, are you looking for the overall budget amount or approval of the tax-supported portion of the budget amount? And to me, there is a difference. So I would just like to be clear. When we get to the point of making a motion, whether we should be making a motion that incorporates one number or the other number or both numbers?
Your worship, for ease of reference, for everybody participating today, I think the motions would be ideally framed as committee, direct administration, incorporate the net surplus or deficit as appropriate of, in this example, 2.71795 million, as proposed for 2021. So that way, that way, first off, it's a number that we can all see without having to flip back and forth. It is reflective of the, of the actual net amount. Again, which, because the, there is that complication between how revenue and expense relate to each other, but I think that that would be the, the framing of motions that I would suggest.
All right, thank you. And council, I think, has been quite clear in past that it is focused primarily on the tax implications of the budget that we approved. So approving the net deficit is appropriate, but understood that that means a budget amount of a different amount. All right, I'm not sure whether I've aided in confusing council further. Are there any other questions with respect to the presentation on the operations portion of the 2021 operating budget? Counselor Butler?
Thank you. So given, I'd like to understand the increase in net, the net year-over-year increase in the public works building. It's difficult because we have information in different places, but it's $110,000 increase on a $210,000 initial to 2019. So it's, it's, it's a 50% increase or more year over year. And I'd like to understand why that is. I see in note four on the earlier page, 75,000 is salary and benefits. But how do we allocate salary and benefits to a building?
Your worship, but Counselor Butler's question, I will actually direct that to Ms. Mallon Chuck because I believe that there are some shared services that may be reflected there. Ms. Mallon Chuck, do you want to speak to that note number four, specifically the salaries and benefits?
Yes, sure. I'm just catching up. Just one moment, please. Um, yes. So basically in this, in this part of the budget, this is where you see the reallocation of maintenance costs. So this is where the, it says public, oh, public works building, sorry. And now I'm going to have to catch up again. Sorry about that. Just one second. Within the context of this budget, we actually have the mechanic allocated. And then the increase is also to, and Mr. Grayhead had spoken to this in prior meetings about hiring a a plumber specifically as a, to alleviate some of the contracted service expenses going forward. Mr. Greathead might be able to speak more if that is not suitable as an answer.
Well, just before you do, John, Counselor Butler, does that answer your question? It is, again, not related to public works building. I think we could get a little bit more precise. It does have to do with shared services. And so services that the municipality has to provide to other parts of the organization. So a plumber, for example, over in the activity center, we've had significant plumbing issues with the aquatic center. And so we have had to rely on significant amount of outside contracted services, which you see as an increase in note number three of $130,000. And this is a priority area that administration has identified to support the overall needs of the organization across our facilities. Does that get it for you, Counselor Butler?
Thank you. Thank you. Are there other new positions funded from inside this budget? Um, I. Struggle with uh. A a a new staff position request being positioned. Within a line item called Public Works Building, and so therefore I'd like to ask if there are other. Um, new positions or additions to staffing. I appreciate the. Point of view that it, there are times when it is appropriate to bring certain services. Which were previously contracted in-house. Um, it is point of view. Another one is that um. The work, uh, whether it is done in-house or done out of house is money spent. And um money spent within the community, so. I'd like to know whether there are other examples of that that I can't actually see from the numbers I'm presented with here.
Yeah, I I can speak to that, your worship, and and Mr. Greathead, you can back me up. Uh, there certainly is uh a maintenance worker that is included. Again, that is in the uh. Maintenance line that is actually reallocated across departments, um, so a number of departments have maintenance costs. Um, and that is supporting the addition of a maintenance worker, um, in addition to the grounds. Uh, that Mr. Greathead mentioned before, um, what we can do is present council. At the regular council meeting with a full listing of additional positions that are in the budget, so you would be able to see that. Uh, in detail, uh, prior to being asked to give final approval to the overall budget. I appreciate uh the the. Question and the need to be able to see that in detail, um, and administration could absolutely break that out and present it to council. Uh, prior to final approval.
I I'd see uh Counselor DeMota and Counselor Keller, but I I saw Mr. Greathead with his mic off briefly. If if he wants to contribute, go ahead, otherwise I'll turn to Counselor DeMota.
Thank you, your worship, just to um add to this point. Um, we, a plumber is our our most critical need at this point. Uh, quite often, we're unable to find the support we need locally. Um, or in the timely fashion, sometimes it's just a a coordination of uh availability that's there. And predominantly, we find that we are bringing people in from. Currently and paying room and board and and L O A uh to have some maintenance and repair work done. Um, our efficiency uh would. Really, really improve um were we to have this position in-house. Um, and quite often, if we have a leak or something that's not not uh functioning properly. We may be going days and days where um we're incurring further damage, so this is, you know, we we see this in ops as our most critical. Need, and that's why that's there, as well as um. Why it's broken out, it's not roads, grounds, and it and this ends up in in um. The Public Works Building is is again, that's just kind of the housing of where our staff kind of live within the budget. And then it gets spread out from there.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead, uh, Council DeMota.
Well, I'll, I have another question that just uh sprouted from from those comments, but uh I'll leave that one. Um, if anybody else uh wants to addresses it, then that's fine, I won't have to redo it. Uh, this, this is for operations again in the um, in the area of revenues, and this is one that I I think it's just kind of been. More of a the thing for me, because I've been a fan of it, and I was just wondering, um, you know, where, what our progress is. With uh metering our uh bulk water and uh is that projected in the revenues for um operations? Because I got excited about it a long time ago because it was an alternate source of revenue. And uh, you know, the potential revenues that we saw from that could help fund certain areas, so if. If we're talking about adding staff or other things, the thing, it it makes me feel better when I know that we can, you know. Work that out on the other end.
Sure, uh, Council DeMota, Mr. Greathead will answer about the utility side, but I would just remind council that we are looking at the tax-supported. Side of the budget right now. My understanding would be that the bulk water sales would be on the utility side.
Okay, so never mind. That's why, but sorry.
Yeah, but it yeah, a valid question, and we should be looking to maximize that revenue source. Um, but it is not incorporated in the numbers that you're seeing here, because that is on the utility side, which, as noted, council has already made decisions with respect to utilities. Uh, previously.
If I may just add a a quick project update on that, when we applied for the. Um, grants to increase the uh sewage receiving or repair the sewage receiving station and put that in at the end of the S block, so we've received that grant. Now, once we put the grant application in. Um, we saw that there is a natural synergy to move the bulk water station over there where it's problematic already at the operations building. So we um, we've engaged um our engineers, um, we've got design already. And uh, just this week, I've received a fee letter to begin uh starting to work on that. This anti-dump, and it will include a a portion of the bulk water. Um, and that bulk water uh project that we had listed for roughly a hundred thousand dollars. That's going to be returned or 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 set back into the books because it was unspent.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead, uh, Council Keller.
Um, page twenty-two or page sixty, depending where you're looking, um. Third line down, the AMA log cabin, there's an increase of forty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars there. Is that just for maintenance of the building, or is that include janitorial? Because I don't see any revenue coming in from the library and that further up.
Uh, yes, and again, uh, Ms. Melman Chuck can correct me. Um, I believe that may also be a reflective of the demolition in that area. Um, but Ms. Malinchuk, do you want to speak to the expenses on the AMA Log Cabin Library and Canot Washrooms line?
Yes, sure, so um, yes, it is important to consider that it is multiple buildings, so the AMA Library Culture Center. Um, the Log Cabin as well as the Canot Washrooms. Um, so in these areas, we have seen the AMA is planned as a demolition, but under a capital uh need, just because of the. Dollar value associated with it, you'll see it on the capital listing. Um, uh, there is some increases here as well in transfers to restricted. Um, as well as the aging infrastructure maintaining as well as uh for. You'll see that in increases to contracted services as well as materials, goods and supplies needed for those areas. Um, as um, in these areas, you'll also see over the years, just an incremental increase in the reserve. Um, addition so that we can plan for the future as the infrastructure ages.
So we will, so we will see these light items again under janitorial to uh recreation.
Right, so janitorial is listed under the recreation part of it, this is just for the um maintenance of those buildings.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor DeMota.
Um, this is just for council in in consideration. For uh, you know, a future council, and and it it does have an impact on this budget, but for those of you that that run uh. Or us that may run and uh, you know, successfully get re-elected, I would. I would like to start the conversation, or at least continue on on the pros and cons of of owning housing. Right now, I think we're getting a pretty good deal on the property that we're renting. Uh, because it does have the availability of up to six rooms, I believe, five or six rooms. So I I think that convenience is really helpful, but when you look at the long-term aspect. Of um our commitment there, in ten years, we'll be paying out over half a million dollars. Um, you know, for the, for securing those spaces. So if if you look at a bigger picture, and let's say if we can get a mortgage for twenty years and pay the similar amount. Um, down the road, I think it it might be considerable to uh to get some housing. What we're getting right now uh would be equivalent to half of what it would cost to own uh our our own place. So I I think for the municipality, we're we're getting a good deal on that. Um, housing, if we use it to its maximum potential, but down the road, I think it's more important, I think. Uh, you know, as far as being responsible to our stakeholders, that we look at some long-range plan to be able to facilitate some housing for our staff. To that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Jono. Counselor, do you know you you've remained muted?
Somebody must muted me because I had, thank you for uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Given for the presentation and all the staff that have done this. I I I'm not too pleased with where this is going, so I'll make some quick comments here, so. As I understand it, when we're talking the operations here, the amounts that we're talking on this page, I don't know what it is. So we talked here about the seventy-five thousand dollar increase force and salaries and benefits for a plumber. And the way I understand it, this is an increase to the tax envelope, in other words, we're asking taxpayers to fund us. But the way Mr. Greathead explained the cost that we incur, there should be a saving somewhere else, there should be no increase. To the taxpayer in this, it should be a savings, if we're paying for hotel rooms and traveling and so on and so forth, should be a savings, so to me, that should not be coming. At an expense to the taxpayer. You talked about new positions uh uh that are going to be outlined at a future date. I'm wondering why they're not in here. It's a budget. Uh, it should be clear and transparent, and it should be open. The last thing. We just talked about uh under this, the buildings in in uh locked building and so on and so forth, same thing. Oh, a lot of the money is in reserves, well, how much? I think that should be open and transparent. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Given, uh. Were you intending to?
Yeah, yes. No, your worship, uh, I actually, I will respond to Counselor Jono's uh point about transparency of the budget. Counselor Jono, I would agree. I think uh there may be alternate ways to handle our treatment of allocation of annual capital dollars. For ongoing maintenance and repair. Um, I appreciate that uh we have had a tradition here of reflecting that as reserves. Which I think gives a bit of the impression that it's a rainy day fund uh for some other time. Um, but my understanding is that reserves here are really intended to represent a. Transfer in and often it's transfer out in the same year uh to handle uh capital expense or maintenance costs. I think you're exactly correct, that can and should be reflected better uh in future budgets. It is uh challenging this year, given where we are in the process and understanding that council and administration have. Uh, had a couple goes at this budget. Um, you know, we are at a stage now where uh we need to focus on uh decision-making. And and uh the major changes. Uh, I. And actually councils should see in the uh administration presentation that was emailed to you further on. You'll see a recommendation of uh an allocation of dollars to the twenty-twenty-two budget preparation, and council, as you know, I think that really gets to your point. About uh the fact that we can do better to increase the transparency and understandability of the budget. Um, and improve our budget presentations, I would agree with you on that, and that's why you're seeing that recommendation towards the end of our day-to-day. Of an allocation to support the uh twenty-twenty-two budget development process, but the twenty-twenty-one. Um, is fairly far along, was fairly far along before I arrived. Um, and council, uh, I think has gone through it in some detail, and so that's why. We are focusing at the at the higher order about the significant net changes.
Thank you for that, uh, Mr. Given, as as um. Mr. Given has just indicated, I mean, council uh did have extensive discussions about the budget uh. Throughout last fall and on December fifteenth, although we had planned to approve the the budget at that time. We deferred decision until into twenty-twenty-one, I thought primarily on the basis that. Um, we had not resolved the utilities budget, and that was going to have an impact on the operating budget. Um, and I I am not one, as you know, to uh attempt in any way to stifle discussion, but we are now. An hour in, we have yet to make a single motion, and we probably have twenty motions to make today. Um, so I just uh encourage council, I thought there was an appetite back in December to. Approve a budget um with a. Uh, a small um potential increase or perhaps a small decrease from the twenty-nineteen. Tax-supported requisition um, counsel thoroughly canvassed all those issues, so. It it would be um helpful for our day, certainly um to move with with uh. Some clarity to an endpoint, but I I leave it to council, um, it is a budget that you have to be comfortable passing. But let's, let's get on to the to the motions if we can, but it's, Council McGrath.
I'd like to take a crack at the first motion here, that the motion read committee of the whole direct administration. To incorporate a deficit of two million seven hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand into the final operating budget on April sixth. Did I word that okay? Good.
I think the the intent is clear, um, so that is approving the department. Um, the operational department budget as presented with a tax-supported deficit of. That number, two million seven hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, and that is to be incorporated um into a final budget to be presented to council for approval. So we're not approving the budget, we're approving an amount to come to council for approval on April sixth, correct? That's your intent? All right, thank you, Council McGrath. Debate on that particular motion? Counselor Butler.
Thank you very much, I. Find it difficult sometimes to know where to place comments, because um until now. I have attempted to ask for clarification, I've received it, but um. I can't support this, um, Mayor Ireland, you were quite right, uh, that back in fall, we were ready to pass. Uh, I think we were readying ourselves to pass a budget with a small increase, but in the operations department, this. Um, requested four hundred thousand dollar year-over-year increase doesn't correlate with the small increase, it correlates um with. More than that, I don't think this is the year to be adding to our workforce. Um, I understand that there may be strong rationale behind hiring. New positions where we face challenges with um the need to outsource even out of town, and as Mr. Greathead said, with the. Attendant um additional costs like travel and hotel expense and so on, but my problem is. If that's the case, it should be a no-brainer, and we should be able to do it with existing resources, but we're increasing salary and benefits. And we're also increasing the contracted services which would have paid for those outside contractors. If it makes sense to work in-house because it's more cost-effective, then why is there a straight-up ask for additional money? To um support those positions? It we, it's, it can't be both ways, so I find that it's just too much. Of an increase uh without conversation and an understanding of where I can expect or taxpayers can expect to see the savings. So I can't support this motion.
Not to uh. Position you, Counselor Butler, but um are you interested in proposing an amendment uh to the motion? To reduce the amount of the tax support, um, which is in the main motion by Counselor. McGrath uh from two point seven million to some reduced amount. I I I will leave that um for your consideration for a moment, Counselor Jono had his hand up.
Yes, thank you. Doesn't this motion be, should it not be more appropriate at the end of the presentation rather than at the beginning? It seems to me, once we've gone through the budget. And we've gotten a complete picture, uh, you you're, you're asking us to approve. An amount for which we don't know the details, you're wanting us to. I just think that that motion is well-worded. I just think that that motion is well-worded, very appropriate, Counselor McGrath, but I think it belongs at the end of the presentation.
Well, it, it would be an option if council prefers to go through the departments, but we are going to be left in the, in the same position at the end, I guess, weighing one against the other and finding it difficult perhaps to make progress. So the intent at the outset, as I said, was to sequentially work through so that at the end, before we got to the final recommendation on the budget, administration would have an opportunity with about a 15-minute break to, to go through and confirm what the final tally looks like based on the intermediate steps that we've taken. If we want to reserve all of those intermediate steps until the end, certainly suppose we can do that. But I, I think that, well, I think we're committed to a long day in any event. So one way or the other, hopefully we can get through it. But I appreciate those comments, Counselor Juno. Counselor Butler and then Counselor Demota.
I would be satisfied with $100,000 less year-over-year increase. I am coming up with that number because it is the increase in salary and benefits which I imagine to be attributable to new positions in the department. I, as I already said, I could see that it might make sense, but unfortunately I, I don't see that rationale in the numbers. So if an amendment change, decreasing the year-over-year from 398 to 18 to 298 to 18 was amenable, then that would be the amendment that would make me comfortable.
Thank you. I am then prepared to accept a motion to amend Counselor McGrath's motion by reducing the stated amount of the tax-supported requisition from 2,717,957 dollars to 2,617,957 dollars. That is your motion to amend, Counselor Butler?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We have that new motion, Counselor Demota, you had your hand up. Did you wish to speak to that motion, the, the motion to amend?
Well, just a motion in general and, and just to, because Counselors, you know, had brought up a good point and you know, I'm going back to, you know, having a similar mindset to where we were at this time last year and you eloquently came out with this decision-making framework to help us wrap our heads around. You know what mandated service are, services are legislated services and required services, so on and so on. So that, you know, I understand your intended layout and going through this in the process that we're going through, but you know, in my mind, it wouldn't be pitting one department over the other. It's just, it would be weighing in all the intended additions and then going through that framework process in my mind to, you know, what is essential to start off with, what's mandated, what's legislated? And you know, a lot of these additions are what sometimes we consider the nice-to-haves and are they optional? Or like, are they really essential to us providing services? Because that's, that's our, our, our main reason for getting into such details, like when we're affecting services for the community here. So that's kind of why I would more prefer to, to do all of this at the end now that we're into it, but I understand why we're at where we're at. So I'm, I'm having difficulty even saying let's slash $100,000 off of this particular department because I'm not the expert. I don't run that department. But then when we look at the holistic picture of what's the best thing for the community, that's when we kind of say, okay, do we really need a plumber here? Do we really, you know, and, and I have a hard time getting into that level of minutia. So there's a lot of conflict there. But I, I'd really like to go through that framework after we've had all these discussions and presentations again and then see where we're at because now it's four months later from where we were, you know, at the end of 2020, 2020. So I will have a hard time voting on this.
Thank you, Counselor Demota. We have, of course, options and we can direct ourselves as we see fit. I had hoped to introduce sort of sequential steps to get to an endpoint, recognizing that council has expressed previously a bit of an inclination to what I might suggest is kind of reverse engineer the budget. That is, start with the overall final tax requisition, knowing that that is what impacts taxpayers the most, starting from there and, and working backwards. And so we could, I suppose, jump to the end and approve an overall tax requisition position. And then either leave it to administration to sort that out or then start to manage each of the department contributions to that overall deficit. I had hoped that the method that I had indicated at the outset might lead us to a more considered result rather than working backwards, but it is not my council, it is the community's council and the council can decide how it wishes to proceed. But this is, this is an important question for us to determine now because our day depends on it. And if we're going to get through this and have a budget to approve on April 6th, we have to get some order to today. So we have, we have a motion. I appreciate the motion firstly from Counselor McGrath and then the motion to amend from Counselor Butler. I am still inclined to proceed in that fashion if there is concurrence from council, but if not, we can start at the end and, and work back if, if that's preferred method. Counselor Butler?
Worship, there's no right way to build a budget. There are top-down, there's the top-down approach, which I've talked, we've talked about and I've sort of advocated where we start with the tax requisition and then figure out how it works and we can do that. But we will end up talking about what we just talked about because counselors have areas of the budget that they have discomfort with. And so it will then have to be dealt with. Or we can deal more bottom-up, which we're doing. We will encounter the same stumbling blocks and the same difficulties. Either way, we will just encounter them in a different order. I think we should proceed. You did an excellent job at the beginning along with Mr. Given of, of laying out a framework, procedural framework for working through this. I think operations is likely to turn out to have been one of the areas where there's more discussion than others, I would hope so. But I think we should proceed. This will give us a product at the end of the day which will be brought back. And at that time, undoubtedly, counselors will have every opportunity to say, well, overall, everything we tentatively approved is too much. So now what are we going to do? But we have to proceed somehow. And I'm in favor of the process that you laid out at the beginning and, and willing to work with it. And I think we should call these questions.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Counselor Demota, I will allow you to speak again to the motion. If, if you will please, and then Counselor.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. And you know, I just, I thank you for your time and, and counsel the rest of you in administration. You know, I apologize for adding a wrench into the works here with that discussion, but I wouldn't feel comfortable unless I voiced that. So again, thank you. And, and Counselor Butler is right, there is no right way to do this. So I'm, I'm happy with the way that we're going and I'll just stick to that for now. You know, a couple of weeks from now when we're making decisions on this, then if it's too much, then we have to retract. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I wanted to express my agreeance with Counselor Butler's statements and Counselor Demota's. We, we must start somewhere. We're, we're starting here. No decisions that are made today are final decisions. And I am grateful for the process that both you and Mr. Given set up for us. If I learned one thing from last year's tax budget season, I, I learned that we are, we're trusting our CIO. We hired Mr. Given with his expertise and he has worked with our team of administration to present us a budget in which the municipality needs to operate. And my learning from last year is to accept what administration is putting before us and have healthy debate where it's appropriate. But everything that we're being presented with, I am trustful with. And I am very grateful for the work that's gone into it and would like to move us along this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath. Is there any further debate on motion to amend? If not, I will call the question and the question is to amend Counselor McGrath's motion to reduce the amount from roughly 2.7 million to 2.6 million of tax support to the 2021 operating budget. All in favor? Sorry, my screen froze right at about the moment I said all in favor. So I will call again. This is the motion to amend. All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. So we have direction then, well, pardon me, we don't. We have, we have a motion to amend and now we have the main motion as amended, which is direct administration to incorporate the operations department budget with a deficit amount of 2.6 million dollars into the final budget presentation. Is there any debate required on that amended motion? All right, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion as amended? Those opposed? There is one opposed. That is carried. Thank you all. We have learned lots from that, I, I hope, and it may assist as we move forward. The next budget item is sorry, let me catch up, emergency services. It is now 11:04. Maybe before we get into the next one, that has been a challenging hour and a quarter we just spent on, on operations. I'll call a brief recess, perhaps just five minutes, return at 11:10 and everybody can take a quick break, grab a coffee if they need one, and then we will reconvene at 11:10. Thank you. Back to session. In any event, it is now 11:11 and we have a, a long day ahead of us. So, Mr. Given, we are the services portion of the budget. So I invite you to present as you will.
Thank you, your worship. That should be on screen for you now. And so in the emergency services area, again, same sort of approach where you can see the net tax-supported deficit is 923,724 dollars. The major drivers of that are reduction in federal contributions for fire service from the 2019 level. We do have an increase in expense with respect to the honorarium contract, some smaller matters related to computer needs, coverage for command positions, insurance has increased. This is another area where you see that increased cost in utilities and a reallocation or portion of some of the maintenance expense. That's note one. Note two is related to an increased allocation given the current pandemic requirements and administration's ongoing preparation around emergency management in respect of preparedness for wildfire season and, and preparedness for major emergencies. And then finally, you can see that line three, note three does reflect a small amount, a modest amount, a cautious amount with, for increased revenue as a result of the paid parking pilot project. And so that's why that, there is that $35,000 net to the good in that area, again, being extra costs as administration that we don't base the budget on expectations that may or may not be met. But that is the emergency services area. You can see that there is a net increase over the two years from 2019 to 2021 of $98,000 as broken apart across those areas.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Again, if you could revert, stop sharing your screen so I can see counselors. That would be appreciated. All right. Thank you for that. Questions of Mr. Given or administration for clarification on what is presented as the emergency services department budget? Counselor Butler?
Thanks very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Two questions. I think I know that emergency management was a new line item in 2020, but we're not seeing the amount there. I just like a little bit of clarity is just overall what is encompassed by that line item. And then the second part of my question, depending on the answer to the first is the note states that that increase is due to current pandemic requirements. So it makes me wonder why that wouldn't have been covered by the most funding and is being passed on to the tax envelope. And the third one, if we can manage three and then I'll be done, is really more common. I'm happy to see the way in which the expected increase in, sorry, the way the paid parking expected income has been allocated. But I wonder is that sort of your thinking on a one-year basis that income from paid parking would be included in the emergency services department, given that we're really just running it as as a pilot? Because I suppose if we are successful in substantial revenues in future years, that there will need to be a conversation about where that revenue is lined in to the budget. I think those are the only questions and comments I have.
Thank you, Counselor Butler, Mr. Given.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And I'm going to take these in reverse order, leaving the hard one to Mr. Van Teegum with respect to emergency management. But Counselor Butler on paid parking, yes, this is sort of the pilot treatment of paid parking in a budget. If council chooses to move forward in future years, we would have a discussion about the right place to reflect that revenue. And, and you know, in the end, the revenue could be reflected anywhere in the budget. But under the pilot basis, it makes sense here because this is also where the expense mostly would arise. But in, in future years, we can have that discussion. The second question that you had with respect to most funding, to be very clear, administration has applied the most funding to our deficits and lost revenue from 2020. It does provide us with flexibility going into 2021, and that's how we are able to fund the recommendations that you'll see at the end of the administrative presentation about tax credit, financial supports and the COVID reserve. So that flexibility that the utilization of, of most in 2020 provided for the 2021 year is really what we're talking about. So, so there is not a line-by-line, oh, that's a most expense, let's cover that with most. There is a overall strategy of saying this is what it takes to run the municipality in 2021. We have some financial flexibility because of the most funding we received in 2020. We have some financial flexibility because of the most funding we received in 2020. How should we apply that at the higher order to mitigate the impacts of COVID on the community, rather than a line by line, oh, this is most, don't tax for that, you know? It, we are taking an overarching approach, and that is the three major recommendations that you'll see at the end of the presentation. Uh, I'll leave the last question, which was with respect to the emergency management line and exactly what that sort of handles to Mr. Van Teegum, who is obviously the most knowledgeable on that topic.
Thank you, Mr. Given, and, uh, your worship and counsel, if I may. The, um, emergency management, uh, line item, as you're aware, a couple of years ago was relatively small amount. Obviously, the world has changed considerably in the last few years. Even COVID aside with the new, uh, local authority emergency management act, the lame- lamer that I spoke of in my council report on Tuesday. Uh, there are a number of, uh, new requirements within municipalities to, uh, comply to the new act, but, uh, which, which puts the onus on us as a municipality to, um, look at the way we've been doing things and, um, I think I mentioned this on a sidebar to Mr. Given, but in the past, emergency management, um, operations within the municipality Jasper have been, um, for the most part, um, operated off the corner of my desk. Uh, with very little interaction from other management or staff. It's been sort of a one-man show. Uh, that's proven to be not effective, and in fact, the new lamer, the local mar- local emergency management act document specifies uh, certain areas where municipal management must be involved, particularly the agency and the committee need to be more involved in emergency management. And that goes everywhere from the training that we've always done, but also into the revamping the plans, testing the plans and, uh, that that sort of thing. Um, obviously, we can't speak to COVID and where we're going with that, but, uh, I think it is a concern that perhaps this is not leaving us anytime soon, so we are still dealing with the effects of COVID and how the implications on the municipality, but overall, the increase is to improve and, uh, sort of increase our, our dedication to our emergency planning overall throughout the next year.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Van Teegum and Mr. Uh, Mr. Given. Counselor Butler, did you have any follow-up?
Well, I do, I, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Van Teegum, very much. I, I guess I'm still struggling to understand what we mean when we say emergency management. I'm, I'm just not clear, and I, I'm gonna relate it to another piece. So, two years ago, we were spending nothing there, and now we have a sixty-seven thousand dollar item. I'd like to understand what it is. And I want to relate it to another piece, which is emergency social services, where in another department there's another twenty-five thousand dollar request, so I'm seeing close to a hundred thousand dollars request for new money for, for an area that I I just am not really understanding. Um, outside of there being an emergency. Um, what, where that spend is, and I have the very clear idea that it would be ongoing. So again, when I see a year-over-year increase of that much, um, that I expect to be not a one-off but ongoing, I think I'm duty-bound to understand pretty clearly what's involved. So I'm sorry that I just don't see clarity as to i- is this, um, is this an office, a person, a position? What is the, what are the functions? I know we've always done training. Do we need to do more training? I just don't really see where what are the services to the community that weren't there before that will be there now?
Can I speak to that, or?
Certainly, um, you made, the question was directed your way, although I did see that Mr. Given had his stand-up as well, so, um, between the two of you, I will allow you to coordinate, but you might want to defer to the boss.
I will defer, I will defer to Mr. Given and then take his direction.
Uh, well, and I'm, uh, I'm, was just gonna provide context. Mr. Van Teegum obviously, uh, can speak to the actual sort of what this is. But I think it, it's important to understand this, rather than emergency management, maybe as dis- disaster preparedness. Um, this is the cost to the municipality of Jasper to prepare on an ongoing basis and maintain our systems to ensure that we are ready to respond in the case of a major disaster. Uh, over the last number of years, we've seen wildfires in many communities, we've seen floods in many communities. Um, and Jasper is no, uh, no more immune to those types of risks than any other community. As Mr. Van Teegum said, there is an increasing mandate on municipalities to respond, and even in the 2021 budget, the province is shifting more of the burden, uh, to paying for costs associated from emergencies uh, to municipalities and to homeowners. And so I think that really builds a financial incentive for us to, uh, invest in this area, but i- if in terms of context, it really is about disaster preparedness, and I would suggest that that goes for both the emergency management line here and the emergency social services, uh, which have been recommendations, uh, coming from, uh, postmortems on Wood Buffalo and Slave Lake fires as well as others, uh, the High River floods that, uh, emergency social services, planning not just for the physical infrastructure and evacuation of a community, but how you will support the people and businesses on an ongoing basis so they can re-enter the community and other things are important. Um, so that knowledge, harder knowledge in Alberta from disasters of a whole bunch of different natures has led to the municipality, uh, needing to increase funding in response, uh, to our need to support disaster preparedness. Uh, so that's the overall context. And Mr. Van Teegum, I don't know if you want to talk about the, okay, so what is the sixty-six-nine actually do?
Well, uh, to continue to try to answer Counselor Brother's question. I understand the confusion and and, uh, Mr. Given, you brought up a good point, uh, when you use the terminology of disaster services as opposed to emergency management. Uh, we used to always refer to anything to do with the merge, uh, municipal emergency planning as disaster planning. And, uh, that terminology has changed over the last three years. Uh, we, we have always had a line item, or actually two line items for disaster planning, and one was in contract and the other one was in, uh, ser- or, um, the supplies, very small amounts. I think the two of them added up to ten thousand dollars annually. Two years ago, that was changed into, or maybe it was beginning of last year, changed into the one-line item, and now it's up to the sixty thousand, I think we're speaking of today. Um, it is a hundred percent necessary. Uh, we are catching up to, um, regulations and requirements, and we're catching up to the realities of the environment we live in. As you all know, Jasper lives in a forested community. Um, we are surrounded by a force that's been affected by, uh, beetle epidemic. We're in a very vulnerable situation. Uh, we have worked hard over the last few years, upgrading plans and whatnot to be prepared, but we are not there yet, and it's something where you never will be there. It's something where you're always striving to be more prepared. Um, so, to, I guess, to answer your question, Mr. Butler, I guess all I could say is that this is a very necessary line item. This is something that speaks directly to community safety, and in my mind, is probably one of the most important things on our agenda today. Um, so that's, uh, you know, that's just for the questions, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you both for that. Um, I will invite, uh, other questions from council, um, to administration relating to clarification on what's presented, and just remind council that apart from um, the, the net, um, surplus amount that is shown early on in the agenda pages fifty-seven and fifty-eight of the agenda package today give uh, some additional details of the emergency services operating budget. Counselor Keller.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Um, this is Mr. Given, or Mr. Van Teegum. On page nineteen, which I think is page fifty-eight, um, the bylaw enforcement and other, um, it's an increase of fifty-three thousand. Would that be related to the paid parking that that would be a position in order to, um, take care of that new program?
Um, to Counselor Keller MP, at least, uh, yes, in part, the, that is, uh, the area where paid parking expenses are reflected. Uh, there is an increase of summer staff to be able to manage, uh, that program, um, and as well as some of the other items related to paid parking, so yes, at least in part.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for administration? Again, I would, I would like to, uh, help us move to a motion, um, in the form that we had earlier, and as we saw with the operations department. It is certainly conceivable to start with a motion and then amend the motion and get to a result. Um, I leave it to, to any counselors. Uh, I invite you, if you have further questions about what is presented, ask those questions, but if there is any counselor prepared to make a motion, we can start debate and amend as necessary. Counselor Keller.
I can make that motion, Mayor Ireland, um, that we, um, have a net deficit of, um, nine hundred and twenty-three, seven-two-four, um, as part of the twenty-twenty-one budget for the emergency, um, services department.
Thank you for that, uh, Counselor Keller her MP. Is there any debate on that motion? I see nothing. I will call the question, um, for clarity, the motion will be that council direct administration to incorporate the emergency services department budget as presented with an amount of nine hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars of tax-supported revenue, I guess, in the final twenty-twenty-one operating budget to be presented to council for approval. All in favor? Are there any opposed? There is one opposed, that is carried. Mayor Ireland, thank you for that.
You recount that, sorry. I thought I saw two opposed, I just wanna make sure the record is correct. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe.
I will, I will call again those opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for that, uh, Mr. Given, carry on.
Thank you, your worship. Um, our next area is the culture and recreation. Um, you can see on the slide in front of you, the, uh, overview, uh, which would see the net deficit of two-point-seven million, uh, thirty thousand and thirty dollars. The slide discusses the major drivers of that. Uh, there is, again, that cross-departmental reallocation of maintenance costs, uh, is shows here. That's note number one. Note number two recognizes that, uh, the impact of COVID on sport camps, and we have to acknowledge that that is uh, going to be happening, uh, through twenty-twenty-one. Um, it, we also are reflecting reduced revenues uh, in note three for the fitness and aquatic center, and that's why you see, uh, those expenses increase, because those are still base utility costs particularly when we are open, um, but under limited capacity, and so administration is making some forecast or allowance for those uh, reduced revenue opportunities, and you can see the net impact there. And then note number four is, uh, with, related to a, a depend, debenture payment offset. I believe, uh, Ms. Melanchuk will be able to speak to this in more detail, but my understanding is that there was a one-time offset that we had available um, through the budgeting process that, uh, has been, is not available in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, so Ms. Melanchuk, if you can speak to note number four, just to provide counsel a little more detail.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Given. Um, we have spoken about this in the past. It was a one-time transfer to reserves that was offsetting, um, the payment, because we took out the debenture later in the year than anticipated. Therefore, there was no payments within the year that was planned, so we moved it over so that it could cover off um, the, the first year of, of payments, so that is no longer available to be a, uh, an offset. So that's why you see the big increase in that year. Um, and there is, um, also transfers to restricted reserves in that, in that area, and that increase is, um, just do a quick calculation of, um, is also an increase of seventy-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars being that, um, there are a lot of, um, um, projects going on with the rec center at the moment and keeping that reserve st- stables, uh, going forward in, uh, the entire plan of the renovation process of the activity center, um, the aquatic center arena and such. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Mr. Given, are we going back to you, or are we on to questions?
Your worship, we will, we'll change back so you can see council members. Uh, I think that is the introduction we hope to provide. Um, and we're open to council questions. Uh, that, uh, debenture item that, uh, Ms. Melanchuk spoke about is obviously the largest driver in the overall change at a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, and, uh, as I think Ms. Melanchuk-related council has previously heard about that, that item.
Thank you for that. Uh, counselors, questions for administration? Counselor Keller.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I just want to clarify, the cannot washrooms, is that the extragenitorial that is required? Um, propositions on top of the maintenance that was on, um, the operational budget?
So, I'll turn that to Ms. McNapp, but also just to note that the net change there is, uh, is fourteen hundred dollars. Ms. McNapp?
The, um, cannot washrooms, the custodial, all fall under the culture and rec budget, and all the supplies um, for the washrooms all fall under the, uh, culture and rec budget. Any maintenance to the building then falls under operational.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Giorno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my question is, you mentioned that, uh, there's some monies, a lot of the increases are due to, to losses from operation, but I would like to know how much of the losses are covered by most. In other words, how much most funding have we applied in this budget? I suspect, the way I understand most, this is a, the priority application for this, and I'd like to know what amounts were put into the culture and rec budget.
Yes, your worship, um, and Counselor Giorno, you're exactly correct. The culture and rec budget has two hundred thousand dollars, um, that we have provided to account for those losses. Uh, this is the amount that would need to be supported by the tax base, and again, I will remind council that uh, there are three major decisions at the end of the budget, uh, that you have some significant decision-making, uh, around. A part of that is, how much increased, um, flexibility do you think we need in terms of creating a COVID, uh, reserve? Um, so you will see that decision, but administration has incorporated, uh, two hundred thousand in the particularly in the fitness and aquatic center area, where we already know that we will not have the, uh, typical revenue that we would have had in twenty-nineteen. The COVID reserve discussion that we'll have at the end, uh, is about what is council's appetite for risk, essentially? Um, and how much flexibility do you want to have to account for the unknown unknowns of COVID? Uh, administration has corp- incorporated the known, uh, impacts of COVID in terms of reduced revenue for the fitness and aquatic center in this budget at an amount of two hundred thousand.
Follow-up, please, Mr. Chairman? So, the amount of three oh eight, three hundred and eight thousand would be five hundred and eight thousand without the most?
Your worship, I just would need to make sure that I'm on the same line as Counselors Giorno. Counselors Giorno, are you going for the detailed budget package?
Well, I'm at the page that you just presented us here. It's a net change of 308,000. Okay, so would be an extra 200,000?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
The tax base would have had to support an extra 200,000 if we did not have the most funding available to us. That is correct.
Okay, well, you know, just my quick calculations, I take out the, the, the ventures and the amount that's going to restrict the reserves, just basically what comes out, what equates to operation. It amounts at just about a 14% increase. This is a area of the budget that already takes a lot of money. And I thought that the COVID would provide us an opportunity to do a correction, in other words, reflect on possibility of, of reducing our costs, even if, if it meant maybe a change in services. And I'm wondering if any of that discussion has occurred? Or are we just simply passing this on to the taxpayers?
So, your worship, to Counselor Giorno's question, absolutely, administration has had that discussion. As council member, when we came to you with the question around reopening the aquatic center and the discussion there, we wanted to bring that to council, and this was some discussion at committee, you know, why is this issue in front of council? The issue of reopening the aquatic center at limited capacity was in front of council because our costs are largely fixed. Community access to that facility is down under current restrictions, and so therefore revenue will be significantly curtailed. And that's exactly why we brought that discussion to council. Again, the ability for council to mitigate the tax burden on residents in all areas, in all areas, is a decision that you will see at the end of the presentation. There is, and again, if you, you would have seen it as you went through the presentation, there is roughly 1.7 million dollars in flexibility that we have as a result of the 2020 most funding. Rather than a line item by line item, oh, this should be most, that shouldn't be most. Administration has addressed the major COVID-related impacts that we can foresee at this time. And that's the $200,000 in the fitness and aquatics area that is incorporated here. The larger amount, that 1.7 million dollars that is available is subject to council's decision-making on how you want to use that. Do you want to use it to have a lower property tax increase? Do you want to use it to provide targeted financial supports? Do you want to use it to provide a reserve in case things really go south through the course of 2021? And your decision about how you allocate that 1.7 million dollars is really the major, most decision that you'll face.
Thank you for that. I see no other hands at, at this time. I have a question, Mr. Given, to you or through you to perhaps Mrs. Melanchuk. When I look at the detailed revenue and expense on page 53 and 54 of the combined budget, so subtract 38 if you're able to sort that out. One of the benefits of delaying the budget decision, as we understood, was that the 2020 actuals would be available by the time we got to this. And so if those are available, I'm wondering how the actual revenue picture from 2020 now informs the revenue projections for 2021. And I say that in this context, that it, it seems to me that the revenue projections in culture and recreation are optimistic, given where we now stand in relation to COVID and reopening. And I appreciate that we, when we left this discussion in December, we may have been more optimistic. But the realities are what they are, and part of that is the experience from last year. So how do those actuals inform what we see as revenue projections moving forward?
Your worship, I will be supported in this by Ms. McNabb and Ms. Melanchuk, but at a high level, I would say that administration is still seeing some change. You know, there were a number of sales of memberships in late 2020 when there was an opportunity to reopen. People bought memberships again and were coming back to the facilities and, and there was increased revenue there. Some of those people through the end of 2020 and into 2021 had been asking for refunds, and so there is still some totaling happening there. This is, to be very blunt, administration's best guess based on our experience of last year. That's why we have incorporated that $200,000 in uncertainty in the budget. And why you will see us recommending an additional COVID reserve of, I believe it was 275,000 later on in the presentation, because we acknowledge that these are best guess forecasts. And so your worship, I'll say that the, the actuals from 2020 may not be particularly instructive in terms of us really developing what's going to go on. We can't account for how quickly the vaccines will roll out. We can't account for people's general sense of comfort in, in being willing to participate in certain activities. And so administration has done our best to project forward based on what we can know at this time. And that's why you're seeing allowances. Our recommendation is to have additional allowances for, to account for uncertainty and, and where our estimations may have been off.
Thank you for that. Other questions for clarification by council or is a counselor at position where they could present a motion with respect to the culture and recreation department budget? Counselor Wilson?
You might have to guide me through this. I'm just catching up, but I see no reason not to make the motion to accept the budget for cultural and rec operating budget as presented with, I guess, suggesting there's a net deficit of 2.7. There are no sorry. Where do we at? Do we need the number included? Sorry, I'm, I'm just, I'm just assist.
You did, you did have the number 2.730030.
Two million, 730,000 and 30 dollars?
Correct. So you, you, you actually missed nothing. Counselor Wilson, that is exactly the form of, of the motion that we have been dealing with. So that is the motion that committed the whole direct administration to incorporate the culture and recreation budget as presented with a net deficit of 2,730,000 and 30 dollars into the final 2021 budget to be presented to council for approval on April 6th.
Thank you.
That motion is on the, on the floor and open to debate. And subject to amendment, as anyone might see fit. Counselor Butler?
Thanks very much. Couple of comments with respect to this motion ending in, I'm being in favor of it. I, I want to make a couple of points. 2.7 million dollars of taxpayer's support in one year for culture and recreation is a really big number. And I just want the public to be aware, I want to underline that number. It is important to understand just how much taxpayer support does even in a normal year go toward culture and recreation. It's, I think in the minds of some of us, myself included, on, on a big picture level, getting pretty high. But in this year, there's a couple of ways we could affect that number. We could attach more most funding to it, and as Mr. Given pointed out, in a way that can become almost a shell game. We can put more here and apply less to the tax requisition. We could play that game forever. Another way we could increase or, or decrease the impact on the tax dollar is to continue to restrict access to the facilities, keep some of them closed. I think it's pretty clear that administration has done that to the extent that they think it's possible from what they're seeing out there. And I think it's also pretty clear that the community doesn't have a great appetite for continuing to squeeze in that area. And then, of course, the other area, and this is one that has come up, and I think we had set ourselves up for this conversation before COVID happened, was to have a really honest conversation following the culture and services facilities and services review, that we would have a really good look at where we could increase user fees to offset some of those amounts. But we can't do that this year either. So it's as good as it's going to get. I don't particularly like the number. And the last point I want to raise is that this is the problem I have when we consistently, year over year, look at a sort of an incremental budget process where we compare last year's numbers to this year's numbers. This is a high number, and if it's a high number in this year because of current circumstances, I can get my head around that. But I would look, for example, at the fitness and aquatic center where we're increasing our tax-supported funding by a full 10% over 2019. We can't let that be the new norm. We can't let that be the place where the conversation begins in 2022 and 2023. Because that's where that sort of incremental budgeting process where you just kind of focus on the year-over-year increase can really get away from. So I'm prepared to support it. I just wanted to make those comments for why this is so difficult. But I, I have to say, I think administration and staff and culture and rec have, you know, really, you've sharpened your pencils until there's no lead left to try to give the best outcome for the community in terms of the services we all appreciate and enjoy and for the taxpayers. So I can support this. Having said all the reasons I might not want to, I can support this.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Counselor McGrath?
I too fully support this motion as stated recently at a regular council meeting, culture and recreation services and, and offerings will always come at a cost, and, and the cost is high. It's high everywhere. But especially in the last year, I've heard very loud and clear from our residents how important culture and recreation programming is to them. And especially as we enter into a phase of recovery and building community resiliency, I see nothing more important to spend money on. So thank you very much for the motion, Counselor Wilson.
Counselor Giorno?
Thank you. Contrary to the previous comments, I might not support this. Simply because there's no discussion on increasing user fees. Administration goes to great lengths to tell us about the extra costs that now the municipality incurs and so on and so forth. But when it comes to increasing it to our user fees, there's no discussion. Like, isn't that the real world? If there's increased costs, you've got to pass them on. I I'm just disappointed that there's no discussion on user fees schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Giorno. Right, I see no other hands. I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? There are two opposed. That motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Given. I think next is community and family services.
Yes, your worship, and we will get that on the screen. And the community and family services, as council is well aware, I believe, the large majority of support for community and family services comes from external sources. And so what you're seeing is a summary of the municipal tax support for this area in terms of the major drivers. And I guess major should be reminded, I should point out that the major is a relative term, major in relation to this budget because the overall net change is $60,000 in tax support. But the major drivers are in that emergency social services area, and we can discuss that, but that it really is that disaster preparation and supporting residents and businesses and being prepared to support residents and businesses in the case of a major disaster. That's note number one. Note number two is reflective that there is some reduced funding in 20, over 2019, and Ms. Waxer can speak to that specific funding that has been reduced. And then note number three, related to the daycare. We already know that there is a increase in costs in that area. And administration has, similar to in the fitness and aquatic center, administration has applied approximately $75,000 to the daycare area to mitigate the impacts of COVID on the operation that we can foresee at this stage. So, you know, reduced numbers in the daycare means reduced revenue, increased costs. And so we have made an allowance of about $75,000. Just to sort of preempt that question about, you know, was any most money applied? Yes. Administration has an allowance that is incorporated in this, and that all leads to the request of the $60,000 of increased tax support for this area. Ms. Waxer is here to answer any other detailed questions related to this departmental budget we see in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Questions by counselors of the administration with respect to the presented budget? Counselor Giorno and then Counselor Butler?
Thank you. If I go back to the, the other page, I see that the amount of support for the daycare is 155, 525, which is mentioned in this thing of public taxpayers' dollar. I'm not sure how many were authorized for these days. But again, it's an increase of 30,000, and then you're telling me that $75,000 of most funding is applied on that. The amount of taxpayer support for children's center is going up, up, up. And again, I don't hear any discussion about raising the fees for the users. This is an excellent facility. We provide excellent service. It's, it's a great service to our community. But I think the users who enjoy those great services should pay. They should recognize that there should be an increase. Because I just, I just see this as, as, I mean, no other community has this kind of service. But I don't think the taxpayer should be absorbing as much as we're doing here. Thank you.
Your worship, I guess the question around childcare. In the detailed budget, you'll see that a real major driver there is a reduction in revenue for, you know, 2019 approved was 1.3 million dollars in revenue. And the reduction is as directly a result of the limited capacity. So the province has limited the capacity that, of a number of, of children that we can have. So even increased rates at this limited capacity wouldn't have made up for that difference. It is a very reasonable discussion to have about, you know, what is the right amount for users to pay? And even, you know, is this an appropriate municipal service? I have gone through this term, the experience of municipality that had a long history of running daycare services, choosing not to. But that was an outcome of a pretty detailed look at the relative priority of that service and council making decisions about whether there was anybody else that could step in to fill that service void. I think that kind of discussion and the rates discussion is an important one. And I think that that is the work that we need to do as we prepare for the 2022 budget. And again, that is exactly why administration is recommending resources to aid the 2022 budget development to undertake that kind of analysis of all of the programs and services of the municipality and to see whether we are portioning the right amount of costs to the ultimate users of the service.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I have Counselor Butler followed by Counselor McGrath.
Could I give up my place in line, please?
You may. Counselor McGrath?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. And maybe more appropriately, I should start by making the motion so that we can enter council-to-council debate and leave administration out of this. So I move that Committee of the Whole Direct Administration to incorporate a deficit of $486,379 into the final operating budget on April 6 for Community and Family Services. And further to some comments that would be made, I would like to open debate when possible.
I accept the motion. It is your motion. You are welcome to speak to the motion to begin.
Thank you very much.
If I could just stall you a moment, though, Counselor Butler asked to be deferred, and he may have a question or clarification appropriate to administration before we start council-to-council debate. So even though it might be somewhat out of order, since he deferred, I'm quite willing to have him ask his question.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Worship. And I appreciate Counselor McGrath advancing a motion, but I I think it's important that we do our best to stick to a process where questions for clarification and understanding are asked before a motion is placed. And the reason is, once a motion is on the table, we're sort of limited to one opportunity to speak for or against the motion. And so I have some questions for clarification and understanding that I was trying to formulate. I'll do my best. If I may, the last year in early summer, there was a request from administration that we allocate an additional $100,000 for daycare support. And council passed that motion, and I'm trying to understand the outcome of that support, because I don't, I don't, I'm not sure where I can see it. I believe, but I could be, I stand to be corrected, that in the fall, early fall last year, the question was asked of, did we use that money? And I believe the answer at the time was, well, no, we haven't yet had to use that money. So I'm trying to understand just how much tax-based support there has been over the past year before I can understand where I think the new amount that is requested is appropriate. And I wonder if it's possible to shed some light on that. And then I also have another question for clarification.
Mr. Given, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. So Counselor Butler, the answer to your question is yes, that money was used. And you didn't see an increase in the cost and expense to taxpayers because the most dollars funded that. So in 2020, yes, that additional amount was used. And if you go with our recommendation, this will be offset by by most. And so the, as I say, yes, that that money has been incorporated into the budget here. I should say, Ms. Waxer may have a more detailed answer, obviously, given her knowledge of the service area.
I just wanted to speak briefly to the fact of the childcare fees. If you recall, we, the Wellcoup Flowers Childcare Center was funded by the the ELCC grant and which allowed, which had parents pay $25 a day, which ended early summer. It was projected in March, but because of pandemic, continued to early summer. So parents saw an increase of, from about $25 to $60 a month, sorry, to $60 a day for childcare. And the $60 was an increase going, coming, based back on the 2017, I think, fee schedule that was in place prior to the ELCC grant being in place. So there was an adjustment to fees and actually an enormous, from the parent perspective, an enormous adjustment, but also an adjustment based back on the years prior, the year prior.
Thank you. I will return to Counselor Butler. You indicated that you had more than than one question of clarification. So please continue.
Well, I I'm still not understanding the 2020 situation. Again, we allocated an additional $100,000 last year. My understanding at the time that that was over and above whatever was the allocation in the 2020 budget to support the daycare. If I look at the 2020 numbers in the budget here in front of us, looking at page 17, and I subtract revenue from expenses for the daycare, I see a tax support, what I would take to be a tax-supported increase of 101,000, or tax-supported, tax support for the daycare of about $100,000. But I know there was more than that budgeted between the original 2020 budget and the additional 100,000. So I I need to understand where the budget allocations for daycare from last year went, because I don't see them reflected here. And then, of course, we're looking at an additional budget allocation for this year, and I I just don't see it.
Sure, Your Worship.
I managed to be clear.
To Counselor Butler's question, maybe Ms. Melnichuk can clarify how that additional funding in 2020 was managed and what impact it has related to most funding in the 2021 budget. Ms. Melnichuk?
Yes, Mr. Given, thank you through to Counselor Butler. Being that it's a revenue and expense area, you will not see it roll over in the given year. So yes, it was approved to spend the additional amount. I will be coming to council with a recommendation on year-end numbers on what we would like to do with the most grant to support some of those additional expenses that occurred with COVID. So that will be coming shortly. I just, I'm waiting on the auditors to finish up the final, final bit of the financial statements. So daycare did go over. They showed a higher deficit than was planned because council said that operations could continue, could continue, and that there could be additional resources allocated. Now, council could choose to use, say, the reserves as planned. But being that we received this 3.3 million in the most grant, we will be coming to council with recommendations on how to use that money for the 2020 year as well as going forward into the 2021 and possibly the 2022 year. You will not see anything reflected in the 2020 budget because it, those accounts close off. You'll see, you'll see assets and liabilities continue and reoccur within the balance sheet. But any of the revenue and expenses, expense accounts that you see kind of get finalized with the wrap-up of the year. They close off, and then we start fresh.
Maybe just to supplement Ms. Melnichuk's answer and to put a finer point on it. And I would stand to be corrected by her, given that she's the most knowledgeable. But, you know, in essence, council approved last year for administration to spend more than was budgeted in 2020. Administration did spend more than was budgeted, and that would put us into a deficit situation at the year end. Administration's recommendation will be that council use a portion of the most money to cover off that year-end deficit. Is that, is that a little bit more clear, Counselor Butler? So, so the approval that council gave was, yes, spend beyond your means, and I'm being overly simplistic here. You know, spend an extra $100,000. Go ahead. We know you didn't budget for it, but go ahead. Spend an extra $100,000. Administration didn't collect an extra $100,000 in property taxes last year to fund that. We just spent more than than we had budgeted for as a result of COVID. And it is an allowable expense. So that would have drive us into, all other things being equal, $100,000 deficit for the municipal budget at year end, because we spent that extra $100,000 that we didn't collect revenue for. Administration is recommending at the year end that council apply some of that 3.3 million dollars to cover off that year-end deficit. So is that, you know, I appreciate the bit of the complexity there. Yeah.
That, okay. Thank you. It's complicated. I, I, sorry, I didn't understand it more clearly. From what was presented, I think that is reflected in what's presented. So thanks for clarifying that. I had another question, if I may, Your Worship.
Yes, you may.
Okay, so this question is about the emergency social services request. I think we've been doing the work. There have been a number of occasions on which we have been presented with and told that work was ongoing under Emergency Social Services, that the Emergency Social Services Plan has been built. And that, notwithstanding the fact that we didn't provide any additional funding, I take it that it was probably done from within departmental resources. So I struggle to understand why now we are, again, being, have this $25,000 additional request. And I'll point out that we also have a $67,000 additional request from Emergency Services, so it adds up. And I'd like to understand, given that I take it the work has already, is, has been ongoing, why we need more funding to continue.
Your Worship, to answer Counselor Butler's question, I think that's probably a combined answer between Mr. Van Teegum and Ms. Waxer. They're both here to support that because they absolutely do go hand-in-hand. You're right, Counselor Butler, those two line items are are linked. But so I'll leave it to maybe Ms. Waxer first and Mr. Van Teegum to respond on the Emergency Social Services line.
While you are correct that the the Emergency Social Services Plan is now relatively complete, of course, there's always ongoing tweaks and updates. However, the the work to be prepared to provide Emergency Social Services services in the event of an emergency or a disaster is not work that can be done off the side of one's desk and is additional work to what we are already funded to do. And I've I've got a list of some of the work that I, that we intend to have completed in 2021, which is includes engaging hard-to-reach populations in emergency planning and preparedness, building capacity internally with key individuals to ensure that they have a clear understanding of their role in the ESS activation, review and refine the content of the assembly points kits and based on new provincial recommendations, review the pandemic plan as it relates to the ESS and general assembly point plan. Because again, that the context has changed even from when we updated it last year. Work on a companion animal strategy within the ESS plan because that I, my understanding is both from High River and from, from Wood Buffalo is that that it can be where a plan completely fails, and we have not, we have some work to do in that area. We need to recruit and engage on an ongoing basis, a group of ESS community volunteers. And we intend also to build a neighborhood leads program to strengthen neighbors and supporting each other in the, in an emergency. So you can see that that isn't work that can be achieved just off the side of the desk at the end of the day in a quick. It is dedicated work that's important to supporting the overall emergency plan.
Thank you for that. Counselor Butler, I will take it that you have exhausted your questions, whether you're satisfied with the answers entirely or not.
I have asked my questions, and they have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. I I see Counselor Keller Grant, he has her hand up. Perhaps I rushed. I had been encouraging people to get motions on the floor. And Counselor McGrath had done that. Counselor Keller Grant, did you wish to speak to a question of administration, or can we get on to debate on the motion that is on the floor? In which case, I would invite Counselor McGrath to speak first, but I will allow you to ask a question because I did allow us to get a bit out of order.
I would just like to ask Mrs. Waxer to Mr. Given, on this last point of all, the new work that needs to be done on this ECC, would that be contracted? Or would you be hiring somebody to do that work, Mrs. Waxer?
I can answer that. As many of you have seen, I've used the bucket analogy in describing how Community Outreach Services was built, which was pooling funding that came in from a variety of sources in the province to, in order to provide a more comprehensive and visible service for the public. We've taken that approach as well with the community development. So community development staff will be undertaking that work, and it's part of the bucket that will pay for the the work achieved, undertaken by that department.
Thank you, Mrs. Waxer.
My pleasure.
Sorry, am I unmuted? My apologies. Counselor Demota, I recognize you. I see Counselor Butler again. And again, I am hoping to return to debate, but I did for short in questions of administration. So if that is your intent, go ahead.
It is. Just getting back to the discussion on the daycare and referring to the cost overruns from last year. It was my intention, at least when we were voting on the 2020 budget, that we were collecting an extra $800,000 to go to reserves. And the attention from that was if there were going to be any overruns, that we would take money out of those reserves to fund anything that we needed to go over. And I thought that we weren't running a deficit, and we did collect tax dollars to go towards those extra monies needed to to operate. So if I get some clarification on that, that would be good, because that was my intention. And I thought that was the discussion back then. So if that has changed now, I'd like to know why.
Mr. Given?
Yeah, Your Worship, Ms. Melnichuk can maybe provide further clarity. But I think Counselor Demota, that was a bit of a misinterpretation. You know, at a very high level, council is well aware that there was a significant reduction in the overall tax-supported funding for municipal operations. And so as a guy that wasn't here last year, I will say that I can't imagine how we would have collected an extra $800,000 that was sitting around in reserve to do, just waiting to cover off deficits, especially when there was such a significant reduction in 2020. Ms. Melnichuk, do you want to maybe just clarify? I know my answer is very, very imprecise. But do you want to clarify? I'm sure you'll be aware of the issue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Given, through to Counselor Demota. That was not what occurred. We did cut the budget from tax support from 7.9 million to 7 million. There are, there were still some operations that needed to occur within that. A lot of the reserves actually were depleted. For instance, there normally was 140,000 going into a general capital reserve for 140,000 in administration. That was completely cut. So, no, we had to cut in areas, and there was no Placement for those contingencies. Luckily, we received the most grant and hopefully we can. Have those discussions going forward to offset any of the deficits that have occurred and that were approved throughout the year.
Yeah, and just to supplement, Counselor Demota, Ms. Melunchak's answer, I think I think a part of the confusion and it is. Admittedly, I will, you know, be a bit vulnerable here, confusing to me still, is what we call reserves here in Jasper. Are things that I imagine as a annual capital transfer from the operating side of the ledger into the capital side. Here we call that, you know, money into reserves, and I think council probably saw that number, a total number of money into reserves. It is not money that is transferred to hold to see if there is some other need. It is transferred. Into a reserve account that is used in the same year by and large to fund. Capital items. So it is a, it is, could be explained, could be presented differently. And it is understandable how that misunderstanding could come up.
If I may follow up?
Yes.
I understand that and I appreciate the the extra education piece there and and I understand the process. However, last year was different. And when we went and cut the taxes back, the talk tax envelope back to seven million dollars. It was understood that eight hundred thousand dollars of that was going transferred to reserves. But the reason why I think at least myself and I understood that others. Made that decision was because if we had any cost overruns, that there would be a bit of a buffer in that eight hundred thousand dollars. So it was actually. Six point two million that we understood was going towards the actual operations. And then eight hundred thousand dollars of that was transferred to reserves in the. Situation that we needed to use that for funding operations. So that. I believe that was what the intention was. I know there was some confusion behind it and as far as I was understood. That was clarified, so. That's why I'm sitting where I'm sitting and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demota. Counselor Butler, I had earlier seen your hand. I'm hoping that you were just trying to call my attention to the fact that I was speaking while muted.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there are no further questions of administration for clarification on the. Community and family services operating budget presentation, I will return to. The motion made by Counselor McGrath and it is your motion, Counselor McGrath, to. Approve the budget as presented, showing a net deficit of. Four hundred and eighty six thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. And your motion and you may speak to your motion at long last. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I'll once again start by speaking to recovery and building community resiliency. When we speak to recovery, childcare is integral. We need these families and these women back in the workforce. Parents cannot handle another increase to fees. It's already really difficult for parents. It's been stated that no other communities are doing this, but no other community is like ours. As you specifically see how we run our C F S department and all we offer for a five hundred, five hundred thousand dollar tax allocation. No other facility is like ours either, nor is the care delivered comparable. The E S S work is also important and as stated, necessary. It's discussions that we've already had at weekly community conversations. It's really top of mind for the residents in Jasper as we are already in the wildfire season. It's super, super important and therefore I am happy to make this motion as stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath. Any further debates on the motion? I see nothing. I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? There are three opposed. That is carried.
Your worship, I'll jump in to say we have one final operational departmental area, as you're aware, finance and administration. I would take your advice on continuing. I I would suggest that we at least would want to close this area out. And then maybe have a discussion about whether we would reconvene after lunch break or at another day or or what, but I. My suggestion from an administration perspective would be that we try to get through everything, but I appreciate that we're all human beings and need to have something to eat at some point too. I don't want to. I don't want council votes to be reflective of being hangry. So, you know, with your, on your advice, I'd suggest that we go through the finance administration. Before considering taking a lunch break.
Yes, I was inclined the same way. We'll get through finance and administration and then. Subject to the will of council, we'll we'll confirm what we're going to. Complete either on the balance of today or another day. So let's deal with finance and administration now.
Okay, thank you, your worship. So on screen you'll see the finance and administration departmental summary. You can see that the net for twenty twenty one, the net change from twenty nineteen is a hundred and one thousand six eighteen. The major drivers of that in the taxation and grants. Is a positive, the council should be aware of. There was. Rent relief offset from twenty twenty. There in twenty twenty, we did not pay as much rent to parks as expected. And so we have the ability to to realize that here. That's about two hundred and eight thousand to the good. But there are other areas where there were increases and again, this comes to. Requirements to transfer to the province for the Alberta School Boards Foundation of over four hundred and four hundred thousand. I should note that this is, that is essentially an in and out and doesn't impact the net municipal property tax support. The evergreens transfer is increasing and so those are the things, those two are the things that people see on the that will impact the bottom line. That we have no control over. Again, they are an in and out. We see the increased cost of policing. Again, reflected here. I know that's a new cost for Jasper. I would imagine that in future years, we'll see that in the protective services budget on an ongoing basis. That cost of policing. We have set up some contingencies with respect to. Negotiations, certain negotiations, the municipalities in and organization wide for. Salaries. There is the new full cost, the new communications position, which council approved in twenty twenty. That is note number three, and that is sort of being fully realized in twenty twenty one. So again, that position was previously approved by council, but we are just starting now to see that full cost being reflected in the municipal budget. And note number four is a reflection of the early costs of debt servicing. For the cannot affordable housing project and the, sorry, the utility servicing for the. G lots, as council is well aware of. It is a small amount because it is towards the end of the year that administration would start to recognize that debt servicing. And I want to be clear, there is still decision making for council with respect to how we apportion the costs. Of future debt servicing for that utility expansion. But administration at this stage has to acknowledge that council hasn't made those decisions. And so we do need to incorporate something in the budget. And this is reflective of a late twenty twenty one start to debt payments for that three point six million dollars of utility servicing. And that is the summary of the overall finance administration area. And I will stop my share so you can see your colleagues, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Questions of administration, either Mr. Given or through him to Mrs. Melunchak regarding. The finance and administration budget presentation. Counselor Butler?
Thanks very much. My question is, has any most funding been applied in this department? I take it not.
Ms. Melunchak can confirm, but my immediate response would be no. Counselor Butler, the reductions in revenue from twenty twenty will be a part of administration's recommendation to close off the twenty twenty year. Similar to the discussion that we had around the daycare. So if there was anything that would pop up in finance administration in terms of lost tax revenue, that would be a part of administration's recommendation to close off the twenty twenty year.
Sure, okay, very much. So then, I guess, not a question, but what is clear is that the. Net change of a hundred and one thousand dollars, if 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 there's no most funding. Applied to complicate the scenario, it's worth pointing out that we would be at about three hundred thousand dollars. Except that we applied a couple of hundred thousand dollars. I think you said it was about, oh yeah, two hundred and eight thousand dollars of rent relief. Which has to be applied somewhere, so we've put it here. And I'm very thankful for it, but it's worth worth noting. That that little actual increase in income has slipped in there. To line number one, where would otherwise we'd be seeing a greater tax burden.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Other questions of administration, Counselor Butler?
No, nothing more from me, and I was going to offer to make a motion if other counselors don't have questions for clarification.
I would welcome that. I see no hands indicating questions. So your motion, Counselor Butler?
Well, if we could word it the same as the others have been with the next net net tax supported funding. Figure to be two million sixteen thousand two hundred and thirty three thousand dollars.
Thank you for that. Question is. On the table for debate, is there any debate? I just want to take the opportunity to indicate I will support the motion, but I wanted to use this opportunity. To thank Mrs. Melunchak and her department in particular for all the work that has gone into this budget over. Many months, as was the case last year, it has been an ongoing challenge. To keep the finances of this organization moving along appropriately and I I really do respect. All of the work that has gone into the presentation for today and and previously, so. Mrs. Melunchak in particular, but to all of your team. Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Given. For your marshaling of your team effort today. It's it's very much appreciated at this level. If there is no other debate, I'll call the question in favor. Counselor Demota, I can see nothing on your screen. Are you in favor? I called.
No.
Are you opposed?
And here I could see everybody else. I'm sorry if you can't see me, but I'm not in favor, so.
Okay, opposed? Well, you are opposed.
I'm opposed.
Thank you. There is one opposed, that motion is carried. All right, that takes us then to a bit of a discussion before we commence with the capital budget. Presentation, just to let counselors know. I do think that it is time that we we take a break and have some sustenance. When we return, whether later today or otherwise, I will tell you what we have left to do. We have to approve the capital budget. That will be a motion. There there will be a motion with respect to the matter that we discussed yesterday, which is the thirty two thousand dollar. Pedestrian safety edition. There are potentially five motions with respect to contributions to community groups who have made presentations. To council. There is a request that we approve a tax credit motion. Another to approve a financial supports program. A motion with respect to allocating money to a COVID reserve. A motion to approve a program and services review. And then finally, a motion that committee of the whole recommend to council. A budget to be approved at a later date, so. Perhaps a baker's dozen of motions left for us. I use that because I I too am hungry and thinking of baking and such stuff. So thirteen potential motions left. We need a break. Do we wish to come back this afternoon and proceed? Have others organized their day to allow that? I am not sure whether some thought that we might get done in the morning, but if you're available. This afternoon might be best. I see nods from some. Is that? Is continuing? This afternoon, Counselor McGrath?
I did not plan my afternoon to be in council, but I am self-employed, so have the ability to. Work it if I need to. If the rest of councils available, I can do some changes on my end.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson.
I I am unavailable from one o'clock onwards, unfortunately.
I'm also. All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Counselor Keller Grantby?
I'm also unavailable. I come back at three, but I have a couple of things I have to do at two o'clock.
Thank you for that, Counselor Butler.
Perspective I'd like to offer is, given what I'm hearing. I think that. A great deal of converse of discussion is probably going to ensue over the capital budget itself. Certainly, I I have, it is the area where I pointed out that I just don't think that there's enough information here on the public record. For the capital budget to really be properly considered, so. I think even if we came back, we'd be challenged to finish, so I propose we. Look for another date to continue.
Thank you, Counselor Demota.
I agree with Counselor Butler.
And Counselor Jurno?
I disagree. No, I just, I I was prepared for the whole day. I have the whole day available. My my other work got canceled, so I'm free and easy. I can go either way. I would like to maybe start some discussion regarding capital. I know that there's going to be a lot of questions, but. Doesn't matter to me.
Well, I I have a suggestion. I I see your hand there, Counselor Demota. But recognizing that two of our counselors cannot attend this afternoon is is problematic. I think everybody has a right to be advised when they will be needed, and if there is misunderstanding about the full day. I I have some appreciation for that. I am more in camp with Counselor McGrath. I can, I can. Rearrange my schedule. A great deal of concern. I wonder though whether it might be worthwhile for those who are able to reconvene at some point this afternoon. To at least confirm the outstanding questions on the capital budget, so those could be addressed when full council is able to reconvene. At another time. Otherwise, I I have a concern that we don't make. Appropriate use of the next time we there are are still outstanding, so it might be appropriate to. Have a limited opportunity this afternoon to at least confirm what is outstanding in the minds of of some counselors. Counselor Demota, I may have cut you off.
Oh, no, not, and I appreciate your comments. The I did make myself available this afternoon.
Oh, no, not, and I appreciate your comments. The, I did make myself available this afternoon. However, you know, I, I think it's three counselors that can't make it. And you know, I value all of their opinions and I know it's, it's very difficult for us to all be present when we, when we shift times. But you know, having those things in consideration and, and there's only going to be three or four of us for discussion. I know there needs to be for, for a forum, but I, I would prefer there to be a greater majority in, in the discussion going through those things as opposed to, you know, having three missing because that's just too big for me considering the topics. Thank you.
Mr. Given.
Your worship, if I can offer, council is aware that the 30th is Tuesday, but is not a regular council day or committee day as a result of the number of weeks in March. And so we do have some flexibility. Actually, that was a bit of administration's thought process in having the meeting today. If we need additional time, there is that time that council would otherwise be committed regularly on a Tuesday that we could shift the balance of the discussion to them.
Thank you for that wonderful suggestion. Counselor Keller Ranty.
Unfortunately, because I knew we didn't have that Tuesday, I am out of town next Tuesday. I can be available Monday and I can be available Wednesday afternoon, but Tuesday evening, I'm out of town. I will have no access to internet and I'll be back on Wednesday morning. Sorry.
No, no, that's understandable. People have to make plans. It happens. Counselor Wilson.
I am also going to be away.
Unavailable, unfortunately.
All right, well.
I, sorry, I, I'll just break in maybe slightly out of place, but, and slightly to be the bad guy. But you know, we are in a position where we do need to find some time. I appreciate the demands of elected office and when you have a hole in the calendar to try to fill it up. I also appreciate when not enough time is budget for discussion, so I will, I will own that. We could have booked the full day today and give you that events notice, and so that's on us. But we will need to, I, you know, I think it's very important that we still march towards having something in front of council, the regular council meeting on April 6th. And so it just asks council to consider what we might be able to do to enable that. Because anything beyond that, we are going to start to really push those other legislative deadlines that we have in front of us. And I, I don't relish having, having to say that. I know none of you wanted to be in this position either. But it just feel important to make that, to make that note.
Thank you for that. We have a Counselor Keller Ranty. You said Tuesday was off, but not Monday or Wednesday. Counselor Wilson, Monday and Tuesday both? Next week, Wednesday available?
Wednesday, I could probably call in. I, again, I'm going to be very, I'm, I'm quite busy at this time of year. So unfortunately, don't adjust it around me, but I could try and make Wednesday work, although it will be intermittent.
Thank you. I will make myself available any day other than tomorrow morning where my presence is required elsewhere. So I am, I am open. I appreciate Mr. Given's comments that we do have a bit of a hard deadline, which somewhat self-imposed, but April 6th seems to be as late as we want to go with this. So I am open to any suggestion that gets us reconvene prior to that. Counselor McGrath?
Maybe we could see who's available on the 31st next Wednesday.
I can be. Counselor Demota, are you just signifying your availability or did you have another question?
I have a question. I, instead of taking everybody's time here and juggling and looking at calendars here, maybe if we get Mr. Given to have himself or one of his admin team to do the, the doodle email where we can pick a date and whatever fills in the best for all of council. I think that would be a little bit more easy for us to get through, considering maybe some of us are getting hangry in the, the meetings going on today. It might be difficult to pick a date right now. I also made plans for next Tuesday, but easily could change them. However, you know, that this debate could go on for another half hour.
Your worship, I was also just gonna, I'm not sure that I've heard it discussed. I appreciate what Counselor Demota is saying. Sometimes though, the responses, we don't get 100% response all the time as quickly as we might wish to get to those types of requests. I haven't heard anybody discuss this Friday. Would that be an alternative or option at any point?
It's, it's a tough date for me, Mr. Given, as I work as dispatcher as well as controller here at Sundock. And I could probably take two hours, but I don't know. Fridays are bad days for me, and I think Counselor Wilson is away this Friday, too.
And I work Friday, so.
All right.
Again, I'd like, I'd like to stress to not.
Counselor Butler, go ahead.
Oh, just wondering where, where Monday, the 29th is, is at? For people. I don't, I don't know if that was run around the table.
I'm good Monday. You work.
I think I might be the only one, and that's fine.
Counselor Demota works on Monday, too.
I'm sorry, I was frozen out there briefly, so I'm not sure where we've got. I mean, the doodle poll is just another exercise in exactly what we're doing, so I but it, it matters not to me. If people need to break, we can leave it to administration to get us organized to the extent possible, recognizing that it's preferable, of course, if we are all available. But perhaps we have to proceed at some time to get us for April 6th with or without the full complement of counselors.
Your worship, so I, I take that as, as advice from you and, and appreciating what Counselor Demota said before. Maybe we can take this offline. You and I can have a bit of a discussion about some of the alternatives we should offer to council, and that we can do that by a doodle poll. I guess the request from administration would be watch your inbox, respond as quickly as possible to that doodle poll in the five minutes that it takes so that we can accommodate that work for the majority.
Thank you. Counselor Butler, I, I think I've seen you trying to get in. Go ahead.
Well, I just would like to understand how hard that April 6th date is. So I guess I, I want to stay positive, but I, I'm struggling a little with many of us have asked, several of us asked over a number of weeks, when can we get that, this conversation happening? And I was really concerned when I saw it pushed up against what I take to be a really hard deadline, that there just wouldn't be enough time. What happens if we can't make a final decision on the sixth? What if we used that for the remainder of this discussion and, and went to the following week? What, what would, how bad is that, I guess, is what I'm asking?
We, we can have a bit of a review of the calendar, Counselor Butler, and the deadlines that are coming up. And we would account for that in the alternatives that we'd offer to council. You know, I, I can't say right now how, how, what the impact would be of going beyond the sixth. We admittedly, it is a bit self-imposed, but let's take that offline. Appreciate where we are today. We've probably accomplished what we can. I'll discuss with the mayor about what alternatives and what deadlines we have, and then we'll provide all workable alternatives to council.
Thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Given. And my recollection is, although I can't remember dates, but I thought we were as late as May last year with a special meeting to resolve the budget rather than a regularly scheduled meeting. So there are, there are other options. Counselor Demota.
Yeah, just if, if we're going to do that, if we're going to do the doodle poll, I was just doing some scribbling around here. And you know, even with counselors getting back and, and things like that, I was just going to throw out next Wednesday afternoon. So we can't do it this afternoon, but if we, if we have a week, maybe put that in the poll. It didn't seem like there was going to be a lot of, there were going to be a lot of people missing on the Wednesday. We can't be here Tuesday because a lot of us made plans, but I was going to suggest Wednesday afternoon. All right, so if we don't decide that today, then that could be added to the, to the poll.
The, the calendar can be broadly available and we'll see who can respond. In any event, it, it appears that we've exhausted our useful efforts for today. We did make some great progress on department reports, so I, I thank you all for, for that. And I, again, I thank you, Mr. Given, and through you to all of staff for the work that you've done to help get us to this point. I was going to ask for a motion to adjourn, but I see Counselor Butler with his hand up, so go ahead.
Thank you, you earlier. Thank you very much. You had earlier suggested that some indication of what information might be missing or what kind of questions might be coming up would be helpful, and I agree. My question is we have a capital budget proposal of nearly $19 million, and I, I can't find on the public record any detail around that. I know some was presented to us, but I've gone back in, in minutes, and if it's there, I can't find it. So I'd just like to know where the public can access some details of that. So when we're having the conversation, we have a framework to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Given.
Your worship, yeah, unless I'm misunderstanding, Counselor Butler, the full budget is presented in this agenda. You know, as we had that challenge with the, the difference between the administrative presentation, which made up the first portion of the agenda. But if you continue on through the way Mayor Ireland was doing the math about page numbers, you'll see that the full detailed budget is presented. And that's why the document runs to, well, I don't know how many pages it runs to overall in the PDF. But there is the detailed breakout of the proposed capital budget for, from 2021 to 2025 is included in this agenda package.
It begins at page 63 of the combined agenda package.
Or page 25, depending on how you're counting.
You know, you know what? It's so big, it just didn't fully load for me. And so I, I just didn't see it. So thanks very much. I, I'm a little embarrassed, but it's there. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Subject then to being contacted by administration with respect to reconvening on another date. I would invite a counselor to make a motion that this meeting be adjourned at 12:51 PM. Counselor Demota? You're making that motion? Thank you. There's a, well, there's more than a quorum of us left, so. Oh, there's Counselor Jurnel, all in favor. This is a motion to adjourn. Counselor Butler? I pardon, Jurnel, all are in favor. We've lost Counselor Wilson, so he's adjourned already. So we are adjourned again. Thank you all very much. And Mr. Given or somebody, the administration will be on, on the email giving us a doodle poll and thank you. And before we leave, thank you, Ms. Byrne, for averting the near disaster at today's meeting. So we could have called for something. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.